Welcome everyone to the special meeting at the San Rafael City Council. Today is Monday, December 16th. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yedans Galati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. Before we get to the consent agenda, I invite public comment on either item, the consent agenda or the swearing in. So if you'd like to make a comment, we'd love to hear it.
For the record, Gary Raggiante, I'll be brief. I'm very happy, as I'm sure you can imagine, after 12 years on this board, to have been a part of a set of circumstances that resulted in a new library for the city of San Rafael. It was the subject of discussion for every single board meeting over my entire career on the board. And there were many times when we said, "It's never going to happen," but it did. And I'd like to simply say that the group of citizens that got together worked assiduously, in full cooperation with the city until the eviction got underway, in which case we had no communication with the city, as we should not have any. But anyway, behind me, Joe O'Hair and also Cheryl Lantini, I ask them to stand, if they will. Both two members of our board, but I want to say one final thing as well. When I got to the board, Chuck Stuckey was already on it, and he'd been there from the day that it was formed, I believe. He's ill, he can't be here, and I want to say that this was something that he had in his mind and on his agenda for all of the last 12 years. So I think of all the things I've ever done, I'm most proud of this, and I hope you are too. We had a great group that helped us, and it's a wonderful thing for a wonderful city. I want to thank all of you for the work you do and say that I still smile about it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? We have in a special meeting, the agenda, the city clerk can show the agenda. Okay, so if there aren't any other public comments, are there any items to be held from the consent agenda? No, not seen any. First, for a request to motion, I'd like to congratulate, building on the comments we just heard from public comment. Thank you to the San Rafael Public Library Foundation for all the work that you did behind the scenes to pass Measure P. We are thrilled, and our community is absolutely thrilled, so thank you. With that, I request a motion on this item, please.
Councilmember, excuse me. I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedans Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. The next item of our special meeting is a swear-in ceremony. I will swear in. City clerk. I state your name.
I, Lindsay Lara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Rob, you're going to be up next, and I'm going to swear one in, one by one. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rob Epstein.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Now invite Councilmember Mica Yedans Galati, District 1. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mica Yedans Galati.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And then.
I will well and faithfully.
And I will.
Well.
Well, unfaithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Councilmember Kurtz, District 4. Councilmember. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rachel Kurtz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Mayor Kate. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kate Collins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
As this was a very special meeting, we are going to adjourn it. And before the meeting that starts at 6:00, a regular meeting, and there are some cupcakes in the lobby. So this meeting is adjourned.
Welcome, everyone. We're going to get started this evening. We're going to get started. So, welcome to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. Today is Monday, December 16. I request the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yurin Skoladi.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. So, welcome. I want to thank our city staff as always for doing phenomenal work this past month and all year long. I especially want to underscore the incredible work done by Public Works, Police and Fire Departments, and responding to the community during those recent big storms. We are so grateful for your professionalism and for keeping us all safe. As part of the employee-led Together San Rafael Initiative, employees recognize exceptional staff for their work. And last week, the employee of Q3 for 2024 was announced, and it is Hector Carlos, the Senior Code Enforcement Supervisor. Hector's nominator stated that he consistently maintains a straightforward, professional, and effective demeanor while engaging with business owners and homeowners, while handling a variety of complex cases, including planning and building code violations. Congratulations to Hector. So, as it's the last meeting of 2024, I am very tempted to review the many accomplishments of the city, by the city, over the past year, but instead, I will keep it short and simply say thank you to all the residents, our board and commission volunteers, city staff, local businesses, community nonprofits, and all stakeholders who engaged with the city to continue to improve our city. We have special presentations tonight that recognize San Rafael's incorporation 150 years ago, as well as the fire department. And both tonight and next year, we will celebrate all that we've done and recognize that we're committed to doing even more in the year ahead. As part of my opening remarks, we also include a land acknowledgement, in addition to the work that we do with the tribe on an ongoing basis. Just so you know and have it on your calendars, tomorrow, one of the upcoming events with the tribe is a mural unveiling that will take place at 1:45 PM at the Alboro Center. All are welcome to be there. This is our land acknowledgement. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Mewak people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, and we honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you. We are glad that you are here, and I'll turn to the city clerk to describe how people can participate this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. For members of the public wishing to provide public comment, displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you're from, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We do offer closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. You can select the Live Transcript button on Zoom to enable that feature. And if you experience any technical difficulties, you can contact me by email at city.clerk@cityofsanrafil.org. Additionally, community members may request reasonable accommodations to provide public comment virtually. For more information about that, you can also email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrafil.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I will turn to Assistant City Manager John Stefanski, as our city manager is not here this evening, for your report, and then I'll turn to the councilmembers for theirs.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Kate, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, I have a couple of updates from the city manager's office tonight, but first, now that it's official, I want to congratulate Mayor Kate, Councilmember Kurtz, and Councilmember Yurin Skoladi, as well as City Clerk Lindsay Laura and our city attorney, Rob Epstein, on your reelection. And our team is grateful for your ongoing leadership, and we look forward to working with you over this next term. And similarly, I want to take a moment to express our gratitude and our appreciation to the San Rafael Library Foundation. As we all know, it was the dedication and advocacy of this group who made the passage of Measure P a reality. And I specifically want to acknowledge Joe O'Hare, Cheryl Lantini, and Gary Raggiante, whose passion and hard work really helped secure this much-needed new library that's going to serve generations of our residents to come. So, with that, just a couple of reminders on some upcoming events. As Mayor Kate, you mentioned, we have tomorrow the Peoples of the Canal mural unveiling over at the Alboro Center, starting at 1:45 PM. And then, on Sunday, December 29th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM downtown, we have the menorah lighting and the gelt drop over off of Fourth Street. And then, lastly, just want to remind the public that City Hall and other administrative offices will be closed to the public, starting Monday, December 23rd, and through Friday, January 3rd. Appointments with staff are still available by request. All library branches will close from December 23rd through January 4th, with the Pickleweed Library closing earlier on December 21st. And I will remind everyone that police, fire, and paramedic services will not be affected during this time, and all emergency personnel will remain on duty. And then, the last thing I will add is, we will see the city council later in January, as the next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. So, with that, that concludes the city manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have two meetings to report since our last council meeting. I was, I mean, I serve currently, and not after, today, on the Economic Development Subcommittee. Of note, in the meeting was contemplated the cannabis business tax rate. There was a robust discussion, and that matter will be, continued to be looked at in the coming year, as well as the development pipeline, which Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch provided. That meeting is recorded and available for public consumption. And then, this past Sunday, I was privileged to attend the fire station open house at Station 51. More comments will be provided on the 150th year. I tried to say sesquicentennial at home. There it came out, but it's hard to say, but it is very exciting. I was there with my baby boy, who was asleep, so I didn't stay very long. Wanted to make sure his nap was maintained, but it was really exciting to be there. Those are my report. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you. I had the Homeless Policy Steering Committee quarterly meeting, and there were announcements about some additional grant funding that will be coming through, so that's good. We had our boat parade. We all attended, and our city holiday reception and the city council retreat. And I also was at Station 51 yesterday for the open house with my golden retriever Luna, who took over the whole area.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I'm picking up on our fun at the lighted boat parade. I want to remind everyone that the parade was on the 7th, but the boats are still lit up. Invite you all to, out in District 3, take a drive down Point San Pedro Road and see the light, the boats there out every night in the harbors. And Locklomen, where Andy's Market is, the first Andy's Market. We have a friendly competition between those of us who are fortunate to have an Andy's in our district. But the lights are still out, so come and see them. Also, and I'll stick with the seasonal events, I attended an event in the San Rafael Cultural District. The symphony was performing at St. Rafael's Hall with, St. Rafael's Church with their annual holiday concert. And the Marin girls choir performed Shalom Alberitum. I'm probably pronouncing that incorrectly, but it was absolutely spellbinding. And I can report for our Economic Development Team that after the event, there were lines in front of our restaurants. So, mission accomplished on several fronts, and of course, the biggest success of the evening, that I'm sure Chief Roman is delighted to hear, is that notwithstanding the fact that we all held lit candles, there were no incidents of any kind. So, around, success all around. I also attended a meeting of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency. It was brief and routine. The more important part is that their Subcommittee, which I am not on, but one of our representatives is, continues to work apace on our new operating agreement for San Rafael sanitation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yurin Skoladi?
Thank you, Mayor. Attended a couple of MC Clean Energy meetings. One was a board meeting, and the other one was the executive committee, so looking at the organization at the board as well. Attended, on December 5th, the Leadership Academy graduation with Mayor Kate, organized by Canal Alliance. We have a lot of the leaders from the canal that they were celebrating a lot of hard work and to become the leaders. Many of them are already leaders, but it was an amazing event at the Civic Center, and it was, it was one of my favorite events of the year. It was very moving and inspiring as well. The annual boat parade, I just love to see both our districts and, of course, our entire city. It's really fun. And right after the boat parade, I rushed to celebrate Jaime Ortiz as the Latino, Marin Latino Leader of the Year. Jaime Ortiz, he works for Bank of Marin, but he is a huge volunteer, very involved in the canal. He's involved with the Chamber of Commerce. He's involved with the Rotary, with so many organizations. So, I was very happy to bring a proclamation from the city to celebrate him. We had an East San Rafael check-in with Mayor Kate and Supervisor Rodoni. This is something that we do each quarter. Hello Supervisor Rodoni. Also, we had a meeting with the task force evaluating the parking permit right now in the canal, Spinnaker Point, Bay Point, and Bretahar. So, again, this was like the task force, just to look at different ideas before we bring it to the entire community for feedback. Also attended with Mayor Kate, the City of San Rafael Employee Holiday Party and ugly sweater. I'm always impressed with the work of the staff at the city, but everybody was very creative, so I really liked that. And then, a huge event this Saturday was, if you probably have seen experiences, is the King Tides. We had a big event this Saturday with the rain. I'm just amazed how many partners there were in there. Really huge thank you to Canal Alliance for hosting the event and also being so involved. Multicultural Center, the Canal Arts, students from UC Berkeley, the Exploratorium, many community members, and our staff. They prepared like a really great event. We met and learned about sea level rise, and then we divided ourselves in like about 10 different groups to really measure the level of the sea, but, and also to see if it was water coming from the rain, or if it was coming from the bay. And then, we came back again, and it was so educational, and it was just great to see so many community members and so many organizations involved. This is going to take a big effort from all of us to, you know, to be proactive. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you. I have two items to report. I'm San Rafael's representative on the Transportation Authority of Marin, also known as TAM. We had our meeting last Thursday. We adopted a countywide transportation plan. I was part of the ad hoc committee over a year's worth of work. It's a fantastic plan to really look at holistic planning for all of Marin County around mobility options. In addition, I learned that evening about a voucher project. It's called the e-bike voucher project, and it's an opportunity for people to get vouchers to purchase an e-bike. The program launches December 18th, this week. If you're interested, go to www.e-bikeincentives.org, and so it helps offset the cost and purchase of e-bikes. And secondarily, we have sanctioned camping area over on the home path. And we had a tour with county executives and elected officials, Supervisor Sackett, as well as Supervisor Lucan. We are so grateful to the county for their partnership, for helping folks have that interim step to get from the streets into the housing. So, that was an excellent tour, and we appreciate, again, the county for being there and learning more about how effective this is as an option for our community. So, don't see any other reports. I would invite public comment on the city manager or council member reports. If you'd like to comment on anything you just heard, now is your chance. Not seen anyone, I will close that item and turn to the consent agenda. Before we talk about the consent agenda, I'm going to turn to the city attorney to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening, everyone. I am going to speak to Consent Agenda Item 4F, which concerns the Fire Chief's contract and the amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement. This is a consent agenda item, but for purposes of public transparency, I'm going to make some verbal disclosures at this time. Before I make my remarks, I wish to note that Christine very much wanted to be here this evening. She's out for medical reasons. I did have the privilege of being present for her performance review and evaluation that the council conducted in closed session over a period of several meetings. It's traditional for the council to take an opportunity in a regular meeting to make comment on the city manager's performance, but in discussion with her, it seemed unfortunate and inappropriate to do so in her absence. And so, my suggestion to the council would be to consider taking action on all of the consent agenda tonight, including the item that I'm about to speak about, and then defer any comments that the council might wish to make about the city manager's performance during the past year and the performance of the city at large until that Tuesday, January 21st, meeting, when we'll next be together, that Assistant City Manager Stefanski referenced. So, a few comments about these two agreements that are before the council for consideration on Item 1F. First, regarding Chief Roman, I'll just note briefly, his background in fire service is quite impressive. Thirty-eight years of experience, Fire Chief of the City of Berkeley before he came to us, and he's been serving as interim chief here for a year. But it is important to make clear the agreement that is before the council and what the salient terms are. The salary is $286,476. That reflects a salary adjustment made effective July 1, 2024, following a comprehensive compensation study and internal alignment review. And those studies were conducted to ensure that the chief's compensation is competitive and aligned with similar positions within the organization. And the chief, under this contract, will be entitled to the same benefits as other department directors, including health and dental insurance, leave, life insurance, long-term disability coverage. And this does not require additional appropriations from the general fund. If the council takes the action, it's already budgeted for. So, that's with regard to the Fire Chief Agreement. Now, with regard to the amendment of the City Manager's Employment Agreement. With regard to this amendment, I have a few more remarks to make. The council adopted new three-year Memoranda of Understanding with all of the city's labor bargaining groups, effective July 1 of this year. And these agreements all included equity adjustments in addition to COLA increases. And being present for the entire process, I'm well familiar that those COLA increases and the equity adjustments in particular were designed to address the city's challenges of employee retention and recruitment in this rapidly changing and competitive marketplace for municipal government employees. And so, I want to note that this proposed amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement is in line with the equity adjustment approach that was implemented with the broader city workforce. And again, a comprehensive compensation study and internal alignment review was conducted, similarly with the Fire Chief, to ensure that the city manager's compensation is competitive and aligned with similar positions, both within and outside the organization. So, specifically, the proposed amendment to the city manager's salary is a 4% equity adjustment, which would be effective July 1 of this year, bringing the monthly salary to $26,238, and then a 6% additional equity adjustment, effective January 1 next month, which would raise the monthly salary to $27,812. And that will then establish, as of January, an annual salary of $333,747. This adjustment is also accounted for already in the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. No additional appropriation is required if the council takes the action on the consent agenda. And all the other benefits and terms in the existing employment agreement that the city has with the city manager will remain unchanged. So, again, the law requires these disclosures, and that's why I'm making these statements prior to the council's consideration of the consent agenda. I'm not recommending, or I'm not not recommending that any item be removed from the consent agenda, but, and I'm glad to take any questions that anyone might have. At this time, I'd suggest that the mayor take the consent agenda as usual, public comment, as well as any items that the council may wish to remove. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Are there any items that the council would like to hold from the consent agenda? Not seeing any, I will open the public comment on Items 4A through 4F. If you have any comments, now is your chance, and you're invited, but not required, to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in. Do you want to speak? Yep. Grace, why don't you go to this one? It might be easier. Oh, maybe not. Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Hi.
There you go.
Grace Garrity, Terrellinda resident, member of Responsible Growth in Marin. Throughout the North Gate development process, the city's overall process and communication has been ambiguous, at times incorrect, dated, and has forced the public to really hunt for any information that can make sense of all that's going on. A few examples are, and these are recent examples, we're not going to go back in history. Initially, the Planning Commission minutes had inaccuracies. Then, deviating from the usual city process and Planning Commission minutes were embedded in the city council meeting staff report. And now, the public has seen all of the condition, hasn't seen all of the conditions discussed at the December 2nd city council meeting. So, I ask, when and where will the finalized resolution with the project entitlements and all conditions be available? The finalized resolution should be made conveniently available to the council, the public, and developer, so conditions for the project can be verified as accurate and complete. For this reason, we request that you change the consent calendar to include for future discussion when all the entitlements and conditions are included and made available to you, the public, and the developer. Finally, as this project moves forward through the next 20 years, many of us who won't be here, it is extremely important for the final version of this project's permits, entitlements, including all their conditions, be clearly and easily accessible by city representatives, the developer, and the public, so the project conditions are clearly understood. It should be posted on the project page on the Planning Department section of the city website.
Thank you. If you could wrap up, Grace.
That's where people, you know, can look for it. Nobody knows what resolution number it is. So, the key here is to be transparent, keep the, keep the public easily informed. Thank you all, and happy holidays.
Hello. First of all, I'm Phil Hallstein, longtime resident of San Rafael and a member of RGM. First of all, I want to thank you, Mayor Collin, for asking at the last meeting that a traffic study be conducted after completion of Phase 1. Thank you for that, and I know Micah made a point to say he would write that up and put that in notes. So, the problem, or the question I have is where, I understand the notes are in the meeting. meeting, notes, but I'm not sure where it is in the resolution or anything you're approving tonight, that a traffic study will be conducted. Second thing is, even though it says here in the IJ that traffic study will be conducted, we were not able to find that in any of the documentation, either for tonight or elsewhere. So, not sure where or how that resolution will be defined or published. Secondly, the the timing was three months, and we're concerned that won't be enough time after occupancy. Not sure what occupancy means, probably issuance of an occupancy certificate. But three months doesn't sound like you're going to have enough people there to make a valid study. When Lock Loman did it, they picked six months, and that's a much smaller development than this one. So, I would ask that you take the consent calendar item off and either discuss it or get that settled before you approve the overall documentation tonight. So, six months, and make sure that we can see where and how that the agreement that you made and asked for and that commitment is identified. So, thanks for being here on a rainy night. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Silverman, a 20-year resident of Terrellinda and a member of Responsible Growth in Marin. At the December 2 city council meeting, Mayor Collin requested and the applicant agreed to a condition for the applicant to pay for a comprehensive traffic study. Unlike the traffic analysis for the EIR, this study must be based on methodology using actual on-the-ground traffic counts, not just on theoretical numbers. It's very important to the residents of North San Rafael to have an accurate assessment of the traffic conditions. We also ask, how will this be clarified in the resolution? Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Smith, and I'm with Responsible Growth in Marin. And one of the most controversial points in the North Gate EIR was that of the traffic study. In the EIR, the city's consultant concluded that there would be no effective net increase in traffic. This conclusion could affect how much, if anything, the city can assess in traffic mitigation fees. At the planning commission meeting on October the 29th, Commissioner Previtali noted that the two intersections on Freitas Parkway at North Gate Drive and Del Presidio Boulevard already have very high accident rates, around four times the average for intersections in Marin County. And that's real and now, not some theoretical figure that assumes the mall is at full capacity. Commissioner Previtali asked Public Works Director Miller about funding for the two proposed roundabouts at those intersections. Director Miller responded that the grants would have to be applied for and are currently in the planning phase. Director Miller acknowledged that there is no guarantee that the city will obtain such grants. And when asked directly about traffic mitigation fees arising from this project, outside counsel for the city refused to answer Commissioner Previtali citing attorney-client privilege. But she stated that the amount of traffic mitigation fees would be disclosed either before the city council meeting two weeks ago or when building permits are issued. Given the uncertainty about funding for traffic improvements, particularly for the two Freitas roundabouts, and given the bad accident rates that already exist at those two intersections, which are right next to North Gate, and which are likely to see increased traffic, particularly when the drive-throughs are operating and attracting vehicles, it's the city's responsibility to be transparent about how much Merlon Geyer will be assessed for traffic mitigation fees and exactly how that money will be used. I therefore request that the North Town Square project ordinance and resolutions be removed from the consent calendar tonight, so that the ordinance can be clarified to state when this information will be released to both the council and the public, and for further discussion if necessary. Thank you. And as someone else said, compliments of the season.
Hi, good evening. Shirley Fisher, Terrellinda, and Responsible Growth in Marin. I also ask you to pull the North Gate project ordinance from this consent calendar for further discussion. On December 2, Special Counsel Nero Doherty stated, I quote, "What the EIR says is that the project is not going to generate new trips such that the city general plan standard, which requires the project to meet LOSD, will be exceeded." With all due respects, this is not what the North Gate draft and final EIR say. Both documents acknowledge that six intersections around North Gate already function below the city's standard, and argue that this project has no significant impact because it will not lengthen the line of stopped cars by more than 50 feet. General Plan 2040 exempts these six intersections from the city's traffic standards because they already function at LOSE and F, near and at gridlock. The resolution you adopted on December 2 states that on completion of Phase 1, the applicant will pay for the city to conduct a comprehensive traffic study to determine whether the intersections and roads around North Gate are maintaining LOSD. You've already heard from other people that the timing and methodology of using actual traffic counts are very important for this study. I want to focus on how the city will be able to determine what needs to be done if, as in current conditions, these intersections do not meet LOSD standards. This clarification is needed. This traffic study should include potential, possible mitigations and future monitoring measures, particularly improvements such as the three roundabouts planned for Freitas are constructed. For residents of North San Rafael, this is a priority issue for San Rafael's capital improvement program. We have to drive through North Gate every day to go anywhere. Near or at gridlock LOSE and S conditions are not acceptable traffic standards. The city needs to give priority to improving these conditions as the North Gate project moves forward. Thank you, and holiday greetings.
Hi, my name's Julie Case, a member of Responsible Growth Marin, and I wanted to say good evening, council members. Congratulations to those of you who had your event before. Here I am again with y'all, requesting that you give specific attention to a commitment to and due diligence to the traffic study reports, whatever you want to call them, as requested from the people who have been consistently showing up in person regarding the different groups, speaking in regards to the 5,000 anticipated cars that was perhaps considered for the Costco. That one didn't go through. And now Merlin Greer for the development of North Gate Mall and the recent approval of over 1,700 townhouses. I am emphasizing a strong request from you to give your committed attention for the on-the-ground traffic counts and not let this get swept under the carpet. I speak to you regarding this request from me and others attending the meetings. And for those who have been unable to make the meetings, I have an 84-year-old neighbor who I have known for 50 years who lives next door to Kaiser Hospital on Nova Albion. She has encouraged me to emphasize the traffic as it is now and how fearful she is when she is trying to get out of her driveway. It sometimes takes her 10 to 15 minutes to do that. At 84 years of age, she's very nervous and she feels scared every time she does that. I leave you with my, I'm going to repeat my request one last time, please. As a member of a family who has lived in Terrellinda since 1955, honor the ground traffic counts. Please, seriously, I don't think you have an understanding of truly how much traffic there is. And I live at the area where Nova Albion meets North Gate Drive. Thank you for your time and attention. Bless you. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Happy holidays. I'm Susan Coleman, member of Responsible Growth in Marin, 22-year resident of Terrellinda. I want to turn our attention quickly to the subject of artificial turf. I want to reiterate our support for the prohibition of the use of artificial turf at North Gate Town Square, except for the dog park areas. In fact, Marin Water doesn't even recommend the use of artificial turf. This was discussed at length in the planning commission meetings, and I believe the recommendation they put forward was to use natural turf and I believe in natural sod, and Merlon Geyer has agreed to that. The reason Marin Water doesn't support artificial turf is that it doesn't increase or encourage biodiversity, doesn't foster healthy soil, does not cool the surrounding area. In fact, it requires water usage to keep it cool, often before it can be used because it gets too hot. It doesn't sequester carbon. It will, over time, use less water, but the water it does use will often have to contain chemicals to clean the turf for use. So, it is another kind of material that will wind up in landfill. It creates microplastics, which we know wind up in the bay. So, we hope that we can stick with the planning commission's recommendation and what was agreed to in the use of real turf and not artificial turf. Thank you very much.
I'm a native to Marin and the North Gate Mall area. I've heard a variety of statements from the council, staff, and consultants, as well as Mylan Greer over the years on this project. I stand here to say, A, the lack of a current-day traffic study is totally disrespectful to the community, as well as a dereliction of sound planning. The current staff rebutes the traffic study citing a legal case in the state of California, saying that using a mall in hypothetical full vitality is sound. There have been so many changes in that area as far as housing and businesses since that mall was thriving, including school busing, that doesn't really happen too much anymore. So, much has changed, but you ignore it. Saying that adding 3,000 people to that living space will not create traffic impact is not just short-sighted, it is not cited. Saying that the development will have a bike path near it and a smart train that makes traffic less of an issue, really? Each one of you, give me your keys, and you navigate your lives with a bike, your feet, and a smart train. B, Mylan Greer Development is here is hideously dense and out of character for the area, the county, and most suburban areas. Mylan Greer calls out an Eichler roof on a tall structure as a lame volley, saying this development is in tune with the surrounding area. It is not. These meetings tend to focus on the open space and the defunct movie theater, praising the developer for putting a drinking fountain in the public space while spending little time on the seven-story structures up to the road on Los Ranchitas. Are they placing those seven structures there so they can build on the property they own across the street at North Gate 3? C, affordable housing gets called out as a win here. 90% of this development is not affordable housing, inferring that adding that 140 units in this development will stop an out-of-county commute for countless people is wrong. Put this development in your own neighborhood. Tear down the houses or go over the golf course and look up at a seven-story apartment building and look at a couple fast food restaurants. Then perhaps you will realize that building a dense, out-of-character development requires planning with a more careful consideration of the elements and a thoughtful approach to the impact.
Good evening, council. My name is Philip Wyatt. My family has been in Marin Wood and Terrellinda since 1960, so 64 years. I have seen, I was here before the mall was even built. And I would, I had just have to say that the folks that have spoken before me tonight raise exceptional points. I would just like to say that this project originally was was much smaller than is envisioned now. And I would just like assurances that after you look at the traffic report, which we all expect will confirm our concerns about this, that you will have in writing and commit to scaling back this project appropriately. And I also say that just approving this, like, it seems like you're going to go through with this whole thing. I think this is incredibly disrespectful to the residents of Terrellinda. Incredibly. I mean, I've been at several of these meetings, and 80% of the people who come up and speak are against this project. And yet, you just are going to rubber stamp this. At least, it seems that way. And I would like assurances that that is not going to happen. And I think everyone in this room would like assurances that that's not going to happen. Again, if you're talking about 1,700 units, you're probably talking about 3,000 cars. That is a small space. You add 3,000 cars, so that is going to affect, it's going to affect the high school, the businesses. You want a mall there, man, it's incredible. Where are the people going to park? People who come in to have a coffee or have lunch there or shop there? There's no way. There is no way you can possibly, that place cannot accommodate that many cars. So, with due respect, you guys need to be much more realistic about the size than scope of this project. Thank you very much, and I wish you all a very happy holiday. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kurt Rossetti. I've lived in Terrellinda for 10 years. I'm a civil engineer, and my livelihood depends on construction. And I'm all for redeveloping the North Gate Mall project with one that complements our community. The North Gate Town Square will overwhelm it. While I support affordable housing construction in Marin, forcing one community that is only 10% of the city's acreage to absorb 60% of the state housing requirement is not fair or reasonable. They're not here because they got what they wanted, but I'd like to congratulate the developer, Merlin Geyer, for completely outwitting San Rafael. After promising Terrellinda a revitalized space, they drove our mall into the ground and convinced the city that the only option was to build a massive, high-density development with seven-story high-rises. Perhaps this was their plan all along. If so, well played. They championed this absurdly huge project and had the audacity to name it after a microscopic courtyard, as if a 200-foot by 200-foot lawn can be considered a town square. Again, well played. They made no meaningful changes to their increased plan and promoted basic requirements as if they were major concessions, like desegregating the minimum required low-income units or having a representative and security on-site during construction. Again, kudos to Merlin Geyer. We bought it hook, line, and sinker. Well, it looks as if they're going to get the project they may have wanted all along. They'll get all the financial rewards, and Terrellinda will get all the risks, the traffic, overcrowded schools, pollution, and no meaningful limits on real estate prices. Sometimes people get what they deserve. Perhaps by electing these representatives, Terrellinda will too. I can only imagine the reaction if this were tried in Tiburon or Mill Valley. But the good people of Terrellinda have their limits. There's been talk of recalling Terrellinda's council member.
Finish your comments.
If nothing changes, perhaps we should recall Terrellinda's council member. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Upjohn. I am a 33-year resident of, well, my whole life, basically, from Southern Marin, though. And I studied urban planning at UC Berkeley. And then I've lived kind of all over the world. I did my MBA in Spain, and have lived in the UK and the Netherlands, all of which are known as very transit-oriented, sustainable places. Marin, of all those places, is the least, I think, sustainable of them all. And it is not transit-oriented. The comment about that, try driving or try not driving here is difficult. I mean, we live in a hilly area, it's difficult. But as a young person who comes back here and wants to be able to afford a house here, things like that, I support the idea of more densification and the ability to save the hills and, you know, from McMansions being built and that sort of thing. So, I support the idea that Merlin Geyer is doing here. But it does need to be transit-oriented. Connecting it to the smart train is a great idea. Maybe underground parking. The traffic study is, of course, important. But I don't think that it should be a scrapped project. As someone who kind of speaks as the young generation for the future, there's not a lot of young people who really, I mean, many people do want to live in Marin, but it's not oriented for young. And if it's more dense, transit-connected, I think we can make Marin a more diverse and interesting place. But of course, noting what everyone else said about low income, making sure that that is all taken care of. Anyway, I want to express support for change in Marin. Thanks.
Anyone else like to comment on the consent agenda items four A through F?
Albaterry Gersel Park. Good evening, city council. I'm not quite sure I understood Robert's, Mr. Epstein's, comment on the salary increase for the city manager and the fact that she wasn't here. And the question I have, is there a process by which you go through and say, these are the objectives of the city manager, and at some point in time, you measure those objectives to say, yeah, they met them, and a merit increase or a pay raise is warranted? Or is this just an automatic thing where the state, I guess, where there's a government agency says 4%, everybody gets it, no matter how well or badly you do? And if that were the case, how does the community, because I come to a lot of these meetings, and there seems to be a lot of whoever comes to this meeting is unhappy about something more often than not, and these meetings are often very well-attended. And these meetings are often very well attended when there's an issue, especially on housing. So I don't know how that process works. I'm trying to ask, how do you, how does the city council manage the city manager? I guess is what I'm getting to. So that's really my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Not seeing any. I will offer that we will poll item 4B, although I will note, we discussed it at the last meeting for over four hours and there was robust public comment, but there were some specific questions that I will ask staff to specifically answer. And then before we get to that, if the city attorney could just clarify that last question regarding the robust.
Appreciate Mr. Viteri's question. So as I try to make clear in my remarks, the adjustment to the city manager's salary as set forth in my remarks and in the written staff report was not performance based, was rather an equity adjustment that, as I set forth, was consistent with broader equity adjustments that occurred throughout the city workforce, including the executive management team. And I think his other questions about how performance is measured and how it works with regard to executive compensation would be best addressed when the city council remarks on city manager performance on January 21, including his point that, you know, oftentimes people come to city council meetings and express dissatisfaction. I could say that, you know, we hear a whole lot of things more than 40 hours a week at City Hall, much of its satisfaction and some of its dissatisfaction. It's kind of in the nature of local government. But the the city does have performance metrics that have been adopted and which I think would be worthy of more discussion. And so I would encourage him and any others interested to to come back on Tuesday, January 21st, for further discussion on that topic.
Thank you. Unless there's additional comments, I would request a motion on item 4A through F without item 4B that has been polled.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar excluding 4B.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. As I said, I requested 4B to be polled so we can have direct answers. And I'll start with the Assistant City Manager, any comments you'd like to make, knowing that we did discuss this for four and a half hours two weeks ago, but there were some very specific questions and some clarifications that I think is important.
Yes, and I will also add that we have our outside legal counsel, Nira Doherty, is on Zoom, who will also be able to answer some of these questions, as well as our Community and Economic Development Director, Micah Hinkle. I think the first thing that I would like to at least call out is the work engaging the community over this project going back a number of years. I think Mike and I were talking about this, like three, four years. They have done really an exceptional amount of community engagement around this transformative project, including, but not limited to, at least eight public meetings in front of the Planning Commission, as well as the DRB, and then this body as well. With that, some of the questions that we heard from the public comments, and I'll ask Nira, if you can get unmuted and lined up for these. The first one is if you could talk through the finalized resolution process and why certain things the members of the public were requesting aren't necessarily listed in those resolutions? And then if you could also just reiterate the approach on the traffic study that you made at the last council meeting as well?
Yeah, absolutely. No problem. Nira Doherty, Berkeley, Sorensen, Special Counsel to the City. So what's before the council this evening is a ordinance that approves an amendment to the city of San Rafael zoning map to rezone the Northgate property from general commercial to the Northgate Town Square Plan Development District, as well as approving the Northgate Town Square PD Plan. Pursuant to the government code, ordinances require two readings before they can become effective. So tonight's agenda is a second reading on the adoption of that ordinance. We held the first reading of the ordinance on December 2nd. On December 2nd, we also approved two, the city council also approved two resolutions. One was the adoption of a resolution certifying the environmental impact report, and the other was the resolution that improved the various other entitlements. Resolutions do not require two readings, and therefore they were approved upon the first adoption on December 2nd, and they did not come back on the agenda tonight. The city council read a proposed number of changes to the entitlement resolution to add conditions of approval and make certain other modifications to the BMR agreement. That that those changes were read into the record. And when they were read into the record, they became part of the final resolution. That final resolution is to be signed by the mayor and the city clerk once those revisions are incorporated. And the final resolution is a public record and available for the city, any any members of the public to request and review. Additionally, the minutes from that December 2nd meeting also reflect all of the changes that were read into the record at the prompting of the city council. Through the mayor, are there any other questions related to the process that I can help answer?
If you could just clarify, there were quite a few questions around the traffic study. I know that referred to that, but just really clearly for all to understand. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So with respect to the traffic study, as we discussed on December 2nd, the city utilized a near full occupancy baseline for analyzing impacts to traffic. And as the council and the community knows, traffic is no longer a SEQA study area. However, SEQA does require that we study consistency with general plan policies and procedures, as well as any other regulations that the city has adopted. The city does have a general plan level of service D standard that applies to a number of the intersections in the Northgate area. So the EIR, in its assumption of near full occupancy of the mall, studied whether or not LOSD could be maintained. One of the things I had mentioned on December 2nd is that in assuming a near full occupancy for SEQA environmental review purposes, we looked at some court cases as well as the statute itself to determine whether or not a near full occupancy baseline is appropriate. And courts have said yes. The reason accepted by the courts for utilization of a near full occupancy of a mall, even where the mall might not be currently fully occupied on the day of entitlement of a new project, is that buildings can be reoccupied by businesses without needing new city approvals. The applicant had provided data that the city reviewed and incorporated into the record that the mall had a very low vacancy rate from its purchase in 2017 to the COVID shutdowns in 2020, showing that near full occupancy was not just hypothetical in this case, but that very low vacancy rates are actually something that has occurred in recent terms. And then lastly, I'll mention that SEQA doesn't consider congestion an environmental concern. VMT is studied as well as and as a basis of measuring GHG greenhouse gas emissions from vehicles. And then we also, as I mentioned earlier, we also studied consistency with city policies and standards, including the general plan's LOSD standard. So with that, I'm happy to also answer any more questions related to the city's SEQA traffic studies.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything you want to add to see if there are there any questions, additional questions that the council may have on this item? Okay, not seen any. I would welcome comments on this item.
Actually, I did have one question that came forward. With respect to the timing, I heard a comment from the public with respect to three months versus six months or whatever time after certificate of occupancy. I can't recall on the last meeting if there's a hard line on the three month duration or a six month. Can staff reflect if there's flexibility on the timing for the traffic study?
I think the key is the trigger points is phase one, phase two, and really the timing to actually complete phase one or phase two of the project. I don't think there really is council's direction if we want to go three months or six months of timing, but it's also whenever the project moves forward. I will say on a greater vision, and we look over time, especially projects, this is one of many that we're looking at or contemplating within our development pipeline. One area that I think is real important, we're going to have an opportunity as part of the Northgate specific plan grant to actually look at much deeper about what development looks like over time within the planned development area and in the Northgate area. So taking into account Northgate Three, Northgate One. So there's other opportunities I think we'll have or to explore traffic over time. But in terms of specific timing, three months versus six months, I think we, if you like to specify intent on timing, we can definitely put that in. And this is really where the minutes were kind of a critical part, too, in order for us to finalize the actual resolutions and timing. Since those were just approved, now we actually have clarity of that. So but if there is additional clarification on general time timelines of following phase one, the duration of what that traffic study should be generally targeted, I think we can definitely follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't have specific direction. I think what I'm more looking for is that we have flexibility on the timing. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or additional comments? Councilmember Kurtz, any comments?
Sure, I'll just make a follow on comment. And some of it's a repeat from what I had said on December 2nd. You know, as with any project, there will always be questions and the need to provide clarification. And I appreciate the community being that voice and coming forward. But as I said on December 2nd, I really rely on the expertise of our technical staff and other specialists. There have been so many people working on this project for so many years. My role is around policy, strategy and decisions that create a stronger and more vibrant community. And our, this project aligns to our future plans. And so I really, I support this project. And I think our our job now going forward and working with the city and with the community is to ensure the transparency of the timelines of the project, having the having the tools. So if questions need to be asked and answered, we provide that. Because now, you know, assuming we move this forward and the project goes forward, this does not come back to council. And so we won't have, my understanding is, we won't have these type of public meetings around this project. And so now it's reliant on, you know, I hope the community reaches out to me if you have questions, reaches out to the city through the tools that are available through the city. We will be maintaining the website. I know Merlin Geyer will be providing also information through their tools and their communication. And we got to stay on top of it. And and all of us just need to be, continue to be informed, because there will be gaps of time now where approvals get done and then the actual work will go over a period of time and we won't necessarily know all those timings. And so as we go forward, I hope we all continue to be, to work together. Give benefit of the doubt. We're really designed and everyone is invested to improve our community. And and I think we're on the right track.
Thank you. And before I entertain a motion, I'll just build on that. So the meeting we had previously, we had full chamber, very robust discussion about this incredibly important project. And I want to compliment Responsible Growth Marin, who has been a part of those conversations for over three years and have started and helped shape the project. There was a comment from the public about this project being rubber stamped. For me, I don't define rubber stamping as three years of conversation, eight years of meetings. And it's been fully vetted with lots of support at the previous meeting and a lots of dissatisfaction and concern. And it was a long meeting, but an important meeting. And at that meeting, everyone on this diocese confirmed, reconfirmed their commitment to this catalytic, important project. And I'll repeat what I said then, which is, the mall as it is, what served the community years ago does not serve us anymore. What will serve us is this project that's coming forward. So I don't hear any other comments about changing the ordinance. So with that, I would request a motion. Councilmember Kurtz, would you like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion from 4B.
Is there a second? Madam City Clerk, do you need us?
Do I, should I read the?
If you can read the recommendation language, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so for 4B, waive the, it's the Northgate Town Square Project Ordinance Adoption. The action is waive the second reading and adopt a title only ordinance 2043.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. We have completed the consent agenda. And we will move along to special presentations. We have three of them. Before we get into the special presentations, one's a proclamation supporting shop San Rafael, and then two regarding the city's 150th anniversary. We invite public comment prior to our special presentation. So if you'd like to comment on any of those three presentations, now is your opportunity. Okay, not seeing anyone. I will go ahead and we'll start with the proclamation supporting shop San Rafael. And I know that once I read it, Chamber CEO Karen Strollia will come up, as well as BID Director Sarah Tippel. So the proclamation and recognition of shop San Rafael. Whereas, the city of San Rafael celebrates our local small businesses as they are essential contributors to the economic health of the city of San Rafael. And whereas, 48 out of every $100 spent when shopping with locally owned businesses remain in San Rafael versus $14 when shopping nonlocal or $0 when shopping online. I should read that again. Just reminds you, shop downtown, shop in Terre Linda, shop throughout San Rafael. Whereas, shopping with small businesses in San Rafael helps to enhance local character, stimulate entrepreneurship, enhance community well being, strengthen local decision making, reduce environmental impact and create local jobs. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize and proclaim city of San Rafael's support to shop San Rafael and urge residents of our community to support our local businesses and merchants during this holiday season. I would invite Karen Strollia to come on up and say a few comments. Sarah Tippel, and I know Sarah, we also have the Business Improvement District later as well, but we would love to hear your comments on this item.
Awesome. Thank you. Sarah and I are really honored to actually receive this proclamation this evening. So we're going to take a second to kind of speak from our different lenses, whether it's the chamber lens or the Business Improvement District lens. But I did want to thank the city of San Rafael staff and our elected partners here for recognizing the San Rafael Chamber and the Business Improvement District with this small business proclamation. We're proud of our ongoing work supporting local businesses and fostering a strong, vibrant community. We're excited about the opportunities and growth ahead in the coming years. We continue to build a thriving business environment together. We, the chamber recently, at our end of year wrap up, sent out a survey to our membership to really capture what are their concerns about the economy in 2025? It was pretty split. 50% I would say were worried about the economic vitality of our downtown area. The other 50% are worried about the impacts of the new administration coming in at the federal level. So what we are doing as the chamber is looking to host a robust informational experience early next year for businesses and that will really draw a bigger picture with more understanding about what some of these decisions at the federal space can, how they're going to potentially impact our local community. So stay tuned for that. We'll have dates and more information as we get going. But ultimately, we want our businesses to thrive and have the opportunity to focus on them, their families and their businesses livelihood. So thank you again for the proclamation. We're honored to be recognized for our passion and commitment to our business community and the people bringing it to life. And I'm going to pass it over to Sarah.
Thank you. Hey, you stole my fun fact about how much money is spent when you shop local, but I do have it on our website and I'll repeat it again. When you have $100 to spend, 48 stays local. Which is, and I finish every conversation starting probably about the end of November has everybody, is everyone shopping local this season? If everyone buys one gift from one of those gift, from one of those stores and restaurants and business owners that are downtown, then we're providing a service to our community and making it bigger and stronger. Shopping local is more than just a transaction. It's an investment in the vitality and character of our downtown San Rafael community. Every time you choose to buy from a local business, you're helping sustain the unique shops. shops, restaurants, and services that make our downtown vibrant and distinctive. These are the businesses that provide personalized customer experiences, which is really important, create jobs for our neighbors, and contribute to the local economy in ways that big, big box retailers or online giants simply can't. So I, I don't know if you guys saw this, but I created our first annual Downtown San Rafael Shopping Guide. If you don't know what to get anyone, go to downtownsanarafel.org and there's a whole list of fun, fun shops. And there's a pineapple cat bed that you can buy in downtown San Rafael. And that, you didn't, you didn't know that until you go to the, the online shopping gift guide in downtown San Rafael. So just a reminder, everyone shop small if you can. I know it's hard when you know exactly when you want to get someone, but there's always something out there for everyone in downtown San Rafael.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Oh, yeah, in the elves. There's 36 of them hiding in downtown San Rafael. And that promotes local shopping and going into the businesses. I love that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chamber, for your collaboration and partnership. Thank you so much. We have two proclamations coming up next. One is around the city and one is the fire department. So the first one I'll read, it's proclamation recognition of the city of San Rafael's 150th anniversary. I'll read part of it and then I'm honored that Supervisor Redoni is here as well to make a few comments. Whereas the city of San Rafael Incorporated in 1874 stands as one of the California's oldest celebrated, celebrated for its rich history, cultural diversity, and strong sense of community. And whereas San Rafael's history dates to its origin as a region stewarded by the Coast Miwok people for thousands of years, then transformed by an agricultural settlement and the establishment of the San Rafael Mission in 1817, and which has since evolved into a city that values its history while embracing sustainable growth, innovation, and diversity. And whereas the city is committed to promoting equity, inclusion, and justice, ensuring all voices, particularly those of historically marginalized and underrepresented communities, are heard and celebrated in every aspect of civic life. Whereas as part of its 150th anniversary celebration, the city of San Rafael reflects on the countless contributions of its residents, businesses, and public servants who have shaped the city into a place of progress and community and looks forward to the next 150 years. Thereby, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby proclaim 2024 the 150th anniversary of the city of San Rafael. There will be more to come on this being that 2024 only has a few more weeks left in it. So look forward to 2025 and more of the celebrating we will do. Thank you Supervisor Redoni for being here.
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Redoni, President of Marin County Board of Supervisors and District Four Supervisor, which includes Eastern San Rafael. I first of all, want to congratulate all of you who have been reelected and sworn in tonight, including the officers. Well done and thank you for your service. But the more important thing tonight that we're here for is a happy thing for Rob, is honoring you on your 150 year anniversary. You know, the county is a proud partner of the city of San Rafael and we've enjoyed that partnership for a long, long time. And we look forward to a strong collaborative effort in the future. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to present to you a resolution honoring the city of San Rafael 150 year anniversary. So congratulations and thank you so much for being a great partner.
Thank you Supervisor. I feel like we should do like a photo or something. Yeah, here, do you mind Supervisor? Sorry. Hold on, fire department, we'll get to yours in a moment. We'll do a quick photo.
Strong memory of attending the 100th anniversary celebration. My mother was on the San Rafael Cultural Affairs Commission. It was a lot. It was the 100th, so it was like a really big deal. Yeah, it was, it was cool. It was right before the American bison tail in 1976. So it was, it was a connection.
I am delighted that the next special presentation is the San Rafael Fire Department's 105th anniversary. There's both a poster out there. I know there was a celebration on Sunday with some amazing photos for what the department has been doing for our community for 150 years. I have a proclamation of which I will read a portion of it. And then I'll turn it over to Chief Roman for a few comments. So whereas the San Rafael Fire Department was organized on December 14th, 1874, and has served its community with unwavering dedication, valor, and professionalism for 150 years, standing as a beacon of safety and resilience since its founding. And whereas the department was originally named the San Rafael Hose Company One. Okay, I like the new name better. I'll just say that. It made up of 45 volunteers. And in 1879, the department changed its name to the San Rafael Hose, Hook, and Ladder Company and proudly use the motto, "We are always ready when you want us." I think that motto still holds today. Sorry, a lot of talking right now. Whereas funding for the department in their early days was made up primarily, oh my gosh. I am so sorry. You're better. I'm going to have a coughing fit.
Funding for the department in early days was made up primarily of member dues, annual fundraising dances, and donations. And whereas the department's first hose carts were originally pulled by hand until 1907, when the department purchased two horses, Tom and Jerry. I didn't know they animated back in 1907. Who were then replaced by the first motorized vehicle in 1913, with Tom and Jerry living out their lives in San Anselmo. And whereas the department went from a volunteer department to a full-time paid department in 1945, absorbed the Terre Linda Community Services, Service District Fire Department in 1972, and started providing advanced life support ALS to San Rafael, Marinwood, CSA 13 and 19 in 1978, and continues to provide the state of the art medical care to all residents. And whereas eight fire chiefs have honorably served the department in 150 years.
I apologize, sorry about that.
You never know when the vice mayor steps in.
Yeah, thank you Vice Mayor. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize and honor the city of San Rafael's Fire Department 150th anniversary of exemplary service, expressing profound gratitude for their courage, sacrifice, and dedication to the wellbeing of the community. And on behalf of all the residents and community members in San Rafael, thank those that have served, continue to serve, and recognize those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice for their community. Chief Roman, we'd love to have you say a few words. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, councilmembers. On behalf of the San Rafael Fire Department, I would like to extend our deepest gratitude to Mayor Kate, city council members, city manager Christine, and the entire San Rafael community for this proclamation recognizing our 150th year anniversary. This milestone serves as a testament to the enduring commitment, courage, and resilience of our department and its members throughout history. From our humble beginnings as the San Rafael Hose Company One, to the dynamic, multifaceted organization we are today. This yearney has been defined by the unwavering dedication of firefighters and the staff who have worked tirelessly to protect and serve the community. The, excuse me, the acknowledgement of our legacy from the bravery of our volunteer firefighters in the 19th century to the advanced lifesaving technology and practices of today. It is a reminder of the critical role that San Rafael Fire Department plays in the safeguarding of the lives and property of our community. We honor the and remember the ultimate sacrifices made by those who came before us, including seven firefighters who lost their lives in the line of duty and those whose careers were tragically cut short by occupational hazards. Their legacy inspires our mission every day. As we look forward, we have reaffirmed our commitment to protecting San Rafael residents and its visitors with the continued support of city leadership, city council, and our community. We will embrace the innovation, expand our services, and strengthen our resilience to meet the challenges of the future. Thank you for celebrating the momentous occasion with us and for your ongoing trust and partnership. Together, we will carry forward our proud legacy of the San Rafael Fire Department, living up to our model that has guided us. Our mission is to help. With that being said, I'd like to invite the commission, our fire commission, for some comments.
Welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
Certainly. Thank you. Come on down, Stan. So my name is David Fockelsrud and I'm a resident of San Rafael for 20 years and I've had the honor for the past nine years to serve on the fire commission. And I couldn't be more delighted with the proclamation today and just honoring the men and women of the fire department on the 150 years. Anybody who's been a consumer of their services can certainly attest to the professionalism. We are lucky and safe to have such a world-class team supporting us every day and putting their lives on the line every day. The chief mentioned that the seven firefighters who have lost their lives in the service of duty is a pretty huge commitment that they make every day without asking questions. So I don't know if any of the other commissioners would like to say a few things, but we just wanted to recognize the department, the chief, and the world-class staff of the fire department for everything that they do for us. Thank you.
Well, I was told I was going to speak and I walked through the door there, so I just wanted to say, I have the privilege, my name is Brian Waterbury. I am a retired division chief with the city of San Rafael. I retired in 2005. I started in 1972. So I've had the privilege of working with this organization for a long time. And I want to say that working for, through that period of time and seeing where it is today, I'm very proud. It's, it's handing off the, the duty and the responsibility to the next generation of firefighters. And I can tell you that you have a really great organization. Not because I helped build it, but, but you, you do. And, and being able to continue to contribute as a commissioner is really an honor. And, and I want to thank you for your support.
I have a file. My name is Stan Burford. I am Chair of the San Rafael Fire Commission. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out before my brief comments that you have on your dais a member, a former member of the fire commission, Mr. Hill. And thank you for your service. It is, it was obviously a great launching pad as it got you there, helped to get you there. I did some research lately, last week, to put some notes together. And as I am hearing what I am hearing, I realize all of us pretty much did our research at the same place. The San Rafael Fire Department, 150 years in the making. The same could be said of San Rafael itself. Born in 1874 from the village that grew up around the mission. The village became the first city to incorporate in Marin. Think small, the population was about 1,500 people. Today, think big, the population is over 59,000. Fire and firefighting is always an issue regardless of the size of the town. The new town of San Rafael already had a small police department, but there was a need for an organized formal firefighting program. In December of 1874, a notice was published in the Marin County Journal, no, not the IJ, which by the way, at the time cost $1.25 for three months. The notice announced the formation of a volunteer fire company project for the growing town of San Rafael. Forty-five men showed up and the San Rafael Hose, Hook, and Ladder Company was formed. The first piece of equipment was a hose cart pulled by hand. It was not until late in the 1880s and early 1890s that the horses were used. In fact, in 1913, San Rafael purchased its first motorized truck. Fire hydrants started appearing in late 1800s. So there was ready water, faster response, and the time of major fires were kept in check. 1906 earthquake did not go by unnoticed in Marin. Numerous buildings were moved completely from their foundations. Brick buildings lost entire walls. San Rafael Fire Department was stretched thin to meet the needs. Trains were knocked off their tracks and ferry service was interrupted because of damaged piers. Mutual aid was hard to find, the damage stretched from Santa Rosa to San Jose. In 1917, the first permanent fire station was built at Fifth and C Street, 1917. It wasn't taken down until 2017. That building lasts a long time. The city had at the time, the construction, about 250 fire hydrants, I said. In 1945, the first fire chief was hired and 15 firemen were hired, but volunteers were still necessary. With the end of World War II, residential growth rapidly expanded in Marin, especially in the San Rafael area. Terre Linda to the north was built, as they said, built out by 1970. Obviously, things are still being built. It was annexed by San Rafael in 1972. And with that, the responsibility of the department was nearly doubled. In the new area came stations, as we number them now, 56 and 57, and the management agreement with Marinwood for Station 58. Interestingly, of San Rafael's 22.5 square miles, six square miles are water, the bay, and the San Rafael Canal. Hence, the fire boat, San Rafael, given to the department by the San Rafael Fire Foundation. Today, 150 years later, we have seven stations, including Marinwood, seven engines, one truck aerial ladder, four ambulances, two wildfire, wild land vehicles, the boat, three drones, and a couple of retired engines in standby. We now have a total cross-country, cross-county communication system providing and receiving mutual aid. Instant communication with Marin County Fire and Cal Fire with their aerial support. Today, we have the best fire department in San Rafael you've ever had. Ready, willing, and able 24/7/365. The San Rafael Fire Commission congratulates and thanks each and every member of the San Rafael Fire Department from day one through today and beyond. And we look forward to all of the tomorrows of the next 150 years.
Thank you, Stan. I think we'd love to have a photo of all who are on the commission or in the department here at the meeting. Yeah, yeah, all you sitting there. Oh, did you have one more person who wanted to speak?
We do have one more comment by Chief Weber.
Oh, okay, then get ready for your photo op after that. Chief, welcome. Nice to have you here.
Mayor Councilmember Jason Weber, Marin County Fire Chief. I'll make this very quick, but wanted to certainly come up and recognize our much older sibling, San Rafael Fire, and congratulate them. And you know, San Rafael Fire covers five unincorporated areas, pockets within San Rafael, and truly does an exceptional job, not just in the city, but for all the residents and continues to be just an incredible partner. The friendship extends well beyond fighting fire. And I think we can all be very proud of not only San Rafael Fire, but the partnerships that exist, as Supervisor Redoni said. So on behalf of the Marin County Fire Department, congratulate our very old sibling. And I won't be around for the next 150, but certainly it'll be wonderful, I'm sure. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And as your older sibling, I'm sure they'll continue to provide guidance. That way, I think.
Go that way, I think.
I'm gonna manage and herd some cats. No, we're all... No, and Thomas, I can't do that. Yeah. You might have to get there to go. Okay.
I bet they had shoes. I mean, I mean, I mean, she was chief for a long time.
How long?
Long time. I don't know. Yeah, more than 30, probably. He was quite a figure.
Did you have an closing comment? Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Kurtz, let me just let you know that as part of the process of the 150th, we're issuing new badges for each one of our firefighters that recognize 150 years of service. In addition to that, they get a belt buckle and a challenge coin. So and then the part of that process is that they redo the oath. And everybody, so all of our members will be redoing their oath through the next week in celebration of 150th. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
We have a public hearing this evening. It's the Downtown Business Improvement District Assessment Annual Renewal. And I'll turn to Assistant City Manager John Stavansky or Director Hinkle.
I'll just Vantwell or Director Hinkle. And Assistant Director Greg, who is here on his... This is the last thing because I'm blanking on it. It's been a long day. His first presentation to the city council tonight, right Greg? Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, welcome Greg. We don't always have cupcakes, but we're glad you're here.
Hopefully not the last.
Well, I'll just tee it off real quick. Micah Hinkle, Director of Community Economic Development. And I think my first presentation to this council when I rejoined the city was this actual item. So I'm pleased to actually turn it over to Greg Minor's capable hands to give this presentation on behalf of staff. So thank you.
All right. Good evening, Greg Minor with Community Economic Development Department. And I'm presenting on behalf of our Economic Development Program Manager Stacy Laumann, who couldn't be here this evening. The California Streets and Highways Code lays out the process for renewing the business improvement assessments on an annual basis. And it consists essentially of four steps. So the first step is for the Advisory Board to provide a report describing the boundaries of the proposed bid, the improvements and activities that will be provided, the estimated cost of those improvements, and the method and basis of those assessments. The 2024 Annual Report of the Downtown Business Improvement District, which was an attachment to the staff report for this item, more importantly, to the November 18th City Council Agenda, provided that information. So you can go ahead and check off that first box. In terms of the next step in the process, that is the city council adopting a resolution of intention to levy an annual assessment. And that action was taken by the city council on November 18th to provide the public with notice and an opportunity to attend this evening's public hearing, which is step three in the process, which is the public hearing to provide the public and specifically business owners within the proposed assessed district an opportunity to raise any concerns and protests or objections to the proposed assessment. And finally, following the public hearing, the final step is for the city council to adopt a resolution confirming the report as originally filed and approving the levy of assessments as described in the report. So staff's recommendation following the public hearing is for the council to adopt the report and approve the assessment. We also have the Director of the San Rafael Downtown Business Improvement District, Sarah Tippel, who spoke earlier here, if there are any questions related to the bid. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Sarah, would you like to say a few words before I turn it over to the council for any questions or comments? We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. Good evening. I don't know if you guys were able to read the wonderful report that we submitted, but I'm just going to read my letter that I included at the end of the report. "With roughly $60,000 in our operating budget, I strive to produce events and promotions that either raise money or pay for themselves to make sure that we have a robust calendar of activity in our downtown. This year, we saw an array of brand-new festivities that brought vibrancy, art, and community to our downtown. The Chinese New Year Dragon Hunt, the Pride Month Window Paintings, the Juneteenth Happenings page on our website, and Dancing Under the Lights. I'm hoping that these first annuals become staples in our downtown schedule of promotions for years to come. Additionally, upcoming Downtown San Rafael Arts District Public Art Plans and our annual mulching project help make our downtown area more visually appealing for everyone. And I wanted to add, Mayor Kate reminded me that in our last newsletter, Data Arts ranked San Rafael number three, the most arts-vibrant, medium-sized community in the United States, which is really exciting. Last year, we were number four, so we're getting up there. For the second year in a row, our paid social media contractor has been vital in making sure that our businesses are highlighted and that downtown is a destination, location to eat, shop, and play. Our website continues to be the place to learn about all things downtown, especially now with its newly added community calendar. If you ever want to find out where Bingo Night is, or Trivia Night, or Karaoke Night, or the art show, or anything that you want to see what's happening in downtown, all the businesses have the ability to promote their own activities on our website. And it's really wonderful. It's a great tool. I want to extend my thanks to Karen Strollia, CEO of the San Rafael Chamber, for a delightful first year of partnership. Also, to the city of San Rafael for their support this past year in helping make many of our projects a reality. And a special thank you goes out to our BID board and our rock star president, Terrence Thornton. Their voices and passion for our downtown has been crucial in getting things done. So I'm available for questions. I'm going to go sit down.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Any questions of staff? Oh, Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
I do have a quick question. I love how Chamber and the idea are involved in the larger events like Mill Valley Film Festival and May Madness. And I know those type of events, and there's others, that bring in a lot of people to downtown in the hotels and stuff. And I'm sort of, I'm curious of how the Visitors Bureau ties in with the work that the bid's doing and the chamber's doing and how those pieces... And I don't know if that's directed to staff.
Staff. That goes to staff. Thank you.
Sure. I think you look at the different approaches or funding for the bid. What I will say for the Marin County Visitor Bureau, it's a different structure. The assessments are actually given to our hoteliers. And that's actually run through a separate bid through the county. So I think it would be appropriate if you have the question like, how does that correspond to really the like support of the chamber in bid? You know, that has been brought up in questions from that. And I believe there are actually pretty limited support that actually comes through to that. But I've let both the chamber and the bid respond to that. To my understanding, this is based on the revenue received from the bid. There is no support provided from the Marin County Visitor Bureau to the bid programming. There is some support that is provided through the chamber, but that's something that we continue to work with and try to support. We did have the Visitor Bureau actually make a presentation to our Economic Development Subcommittee, really outlining kind of their programmatic approach. But I do think there are opportunities and some of that staff is working towards along in partnership with our business community who supports tourism, how to better leverage the Visitor Bureau for supporting overall programs. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, with San Rafael having large hotels and for some of these larger events, if that's the direction, as I understand it, of the funding piece, it'd be nice to be able to take advantage of that a little bit more.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll just turn to the... I don't have any questions either, so I'll turn to the council for comments. I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
I say this every time the BID assessment comes forward, which is that the BID leadership and all the membership are somehow able to stretch every single dollar much further. I look at the budget and it's astonishing. Winter Wonderland was budgeted as an expense for $3,000 to put on that kind of event. And this is replete in every one of the events. And I know there's so much more that goes into it, but I just, I find it... It's almost like I want to call out it a miracle every time. This is, it's extraordinary. It really is. And it really is a testament to folks in the leadership, like Sarah Tippel, Director of BID, and all of the downtown businesses for leaning in and making certain that these events are successful, that they attract more community members to come into the downtown and make it more vibrant. So I'm thrilled that the BID continues and continues to evolve. I am noting, because it wasn't called out, that the projected budget in 2025 is going up as a result of these types of traditions that are coming, the innovations that the leadership is bringing. And I'm going to say Sarah Tippel's name one more time, but a lot of these are from what she has done in other communities, and she's bringing her thoughtfulness and energy here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuran Scolari?
Yes, I kind of like have like a similar comments that Vice Mayor Hill. How do you do it? And stay, you know, positive, like balanced positive after all these amazing events? So I really want to echo that. I'm a former BID board member and a former business owner. And it's so hard for our business community just to run a business and to be involved with the board and dedicate their time to make sure that every event is going to be successful and they are all, you know, involved with it. I had the pleasure to look at the window decorations, you know, and it's a lot of effort and you can feel the love from these merchants. Sarah, I mean, you've been doing such an incredible work from the beginning when you joined, went through COVID and the pandemic and very challenging times. And every event that you organize is just, I mean, you can feel the heart. I've been in a lot of these events this year, and I've seen people that I haven't seen since my kids were little in school. They are all coming together because it's so much fun. It's not just an event in downtown that I have to support as the council member. I look forward to it and I meet all my friends there. So I just want to echo like, thank you so much for the energy, the organization, the Chamber of Commerce for supporting this effort as well. I love our business community and I completely agree. There are like amazing places to shop. I always go out like in San Rafael. I think my friends and my family, they are always like, let's go another city. I'm sorry, but I'm staying here in San Rafael. There are so many choices that it's almost like you don't have enough time in the year to visit all of them. So but my deep appreciation for everything you do to the board, of the BID, all the merchants, and the chamber as well, thank you. And I really look forward to next year. So I'll put it all in my calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
No doubt. I mean, this is a hard job and it's gone up and down with the coming back from the pandemic and business changes. And you've been able to really bring together all of Fourth Street. And I know there's the different, you know, there's the sort of the center of Fourth, and then there's the sort of the outside. And you really bring all the pieces together. So I really appreciate it. Thank you. And I'm really excited about the increase in investment for next year around the utility box painting and the public art programming. That's going to be really significant. Those are significant investments that are coming forward. And I think that's one thing we've heard from the community, and I think you've heard that as well. And you're really reflecting that to bring that forward. So thank you. And we look forward to hearing. And there is nobody I can think of better to ask the Fire Department to do the gelt drop with the ladder. I think you're the only one who could make that happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I absolutely support everything my colleagues have said. And I'll summarize it up by saying the only thing more delightful than attending your events is reviewing your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just, to clarify, the levy is staying the same for 2025 as it was in 2024. So I just want to clarify for anyone who's watching at home. And one thing that was mentioned in earlier comments, this is the first year that the BID is within the Chamber of Commerce. And that was a big change after decades of having a different structure. So I just want to compliment everyone who's been involved in that. Obviously, Sarah, all the work that you've done to make the events happen, but also to make that structure work. And so you can stretch that dollar and the chamber to be able to work with the BID. What we wanted to do was force amplify everything that was happening. And so that was why the two entities have come together. So congratulations to both of you for making that work over the past year. It's a great model and will continue, you all will continue to grow and build on it in the year to come. So thank you for an incredible year. I would request a motion on this item. I don't think there are any other comments or questions.
I'll make a motion.
Excuse me, Mayor Kate.
Sorry.
It's a public hearing, so we need to open up the public hearing.
Oh, my gosh, I was just going right in. I was so excited. I apologize. Thank you. I know there are other members of the public who would love to wax poetic and compliments on this item. So if so, now is your opportunity. We'll have a public hearing on this. Well, I opened it up back up. Welcome, CEO.
I want to thank all of you in this room. And Christine, even though she's not here, for the amount of support and collaboration for this year. It's been definitely an adventure trying to figure out how to build a concentric space between two organizations in a fluid manner. I will say, I think that this work would have been much harder if it had not been for Sarah being on the team. Eli, I'll just second everything you said and exponentially multiply it by 10. Sarah is just a force to be reckoned with. She has a vision for this community. She's extremely passionate. She shows up, blood, sweat, and tears with high energy to make sure our downtown district is well and happy and healthy and thriving. And when it's not, then she loses sleep over that. So we just have a gold gem on our team and I feel really fortunate to work with her. So I want to say that publicly and just again, share the gratitude for the teamwork and the support in this space. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seen any other public comments. I'll close the public comment. Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion on this. I think Councilmember Yuran Scolari, you were starting to give a motion.
Yes, I'm very happy to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming the 2024 Annual Report for the Downtown San Rafael Business Improvement District and levy of an annual assessment for the calendar year 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yuran Scolari?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We have one last, but not least, agenda item. And that is the Vice Mayor Election and City Council Appointments to Committees for 2025. I'll turn to Assistant City Manager Stavansky for opening up the item.
Yep. So good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council. The last item on the agenda tonight is the election of Vice Mayor for 2025. And as we all know, at the final city council meeting of each year, the city council elects one of its members to serve as Vice Mayor for the upcoming calendar year. And it's a customary part of the council's annual proceedings, ensuring continuity and leadership and providing support to the mayor. And the role of Vice Mayor is to act in the mayor's stead when the mayor is unavailable and preside over council meetings and represent the city at various functions. And traditionally, the position rotates among council members based on tenure. And based on that, the recommendation is that the council elect Councilmember Mary Beth Bushy to serve as Vice Mayor for 2025. The second item in this item is appointment of San Rafael council members to various committees for 2025. And so each year at the final council meeting, the city council appoints its members to serve on various local and regional committees for the upcoming calendar year. And those assignments play a critical role in shaping policy, fostering collaboration with neighboring jurisdictions and agencies, and addressing the diverse needs of the San Rafael community. And those appointments are outlined in Attachment 1 to the staff report. And were also discussed at the city council's retreat two weeks ago. And so with that, the recommendation is that the city council also approve the city council appointments to committees for 2025 as presented in that attachment.
Thank you. Are there any questions to staff? Not seen any questions. I'll open the public comment on this item. Not seen any public comment. I will bring it back for comments and I'll just, comments and a motion, and I'll turn to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. It has been my privilege to serve as the Vice Mayor for the city of San Rafael.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. It has been my privilege to serve as the Vice Mayor for the City of San Rafael. I am privileged for a couple reasons. The first and most important one is that I had the privilege to serve under Mayor Kate's leadership. We, as a community, are very fortunate to have Mayor Kate as our mayor. And double that is that we're fortunate that we are the only municipality in Marin where we have a four-year term for the mayor, such that a vision can be carried forward. I am looking forward to the next four years. And I also would like to thank my colleagues for supporting me in my role as Vice Mayor of the city. As folks may know, as I mentioned earlier, I have a recent addition to my family. And my council colleagues have been very gracious to help support me while I was sometimes more attending to my new family member. All this is to say, I am thrilled to make the motion to support Mary Beth Bushy as the next Vice Mayor. We were all privileged to serve with Vice Mayor Bushy when we joined the council and showed us what a Vice Mayor can and should be. So thank you very much for showing us the ropes and looking forward to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, and I'll just add that thank you for a great year of vice mayorship, and you were always present when needed. So no apology needed. It is always an honor to serve on this council with such professional and dedicated and engaged colleagues. We are truly blessed. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Skoladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. There's a next item, which is a city council appointment. Vice Mayor Bushy, would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the city council appointments to committees for 2025.
And I'll second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Skoladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you all for all the committees that you serve on throughout the year. Before we adjourn the meeting, we have open time for public expression. We had a lot going on in tonight's meeting. It was a great way to end the year with lots of different issues and comments. But if there are any comments from the public on an item not on tonight's agenda, we'd love to hear from you. Not, oh.
Julie Case, 446 Novobian Way. Just wanted to reiterate one time, and I don't know if this qualifies for this part of the comment, but you are all invited to my house to watch and see what I've brought to your attention over the last few years. Five houses up from the North Gate Mall.
Thank you. You're invited. I'll see you after the meeting if you want to come and get my address. Any other public comment for items not on tonight's agenda?
Hi, good evening. As a newbie here, you know, started coming to these meetings some months back. It's been a growing experience for me and a learning experience. Thank you for your leadership, your dedication. You know, I hope the public really, truly understands the efforts that you all put out. Thank you.
Thank you. What a lovely public comment to end the year on. So with that, 2025, and this meeting is, oh, 2024, sorry. 2024, I was already reading. 2024 is adjourned. We're looking forward to 2025. Meeting adjourned.